Will all the candidates take their places, please? Thank you. Good evening. I am Mary Furman. I am the Action Advocacy Director of the League of Women Voters of North Orange County. And tonight... You can't hear me. And tonight, I am the moderator. Can you hear me now? Not loud enough? Is there anything in the back you can do? The mic? All I can do is just talk right here, right? Okay. Right, put my mouth right on it. The League of Women Voters is a trusted national organization that does not endorse or oppose any partisan candidate or political party. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. We are directly involved in shaping the important issues to keep our communities strong. As a League member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role, as this one, that has great impact on local, state, and even national issues. Now, if you're interested in learning about how to make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the League's information available here tonight, or visit our website at l w v n o c dot org. Our timekeepers tonight are in the center front row. There are Marion Shane and Patty Chikahisa. They will raise signs, signals, to stop the candidates, or show them when they have one minute left, 30 seconds, and then when to stop. And I am going to be firm that they will then stop. They can finish their sentence, but not a paragraph. Our question sorters are Wanda Schaefer, Jerry Young, and Cheryl Quadrelli-Jones. They are going to screen the questions to avoid duplication, personal attacks, and questions that do not pertain to this office being sought by these candidates. Now, as you see, we have a large number of candidates. We're supposed to have 12. We have two that are not here as of yet. The candidates drew numbers to determine speaking order. Each will have two minutes. Opening statement, starting with candidate one, Mr. Ferguson. At the end of the questioning, each candidate will have a one-minute closing statement. I will read one of your questions to the candidate who has one minute to reply. Each candidate may also answer. But you can see, if they did, we would not get through many of your questions. I have asked the candidates if they agree with an answer to just say that. If a candidate disagrees, he or she can state their views, and the rest of the candidates could state with whom they agree. We want to have time so that all the candidates will have at least one question initially posed to them. We've extended this forum tonight to two hours. Usually, we have one and a half hours, but because of the large number of candidates, we wanted to give an opportunity for them to express their views to the public. The candidates will be able to meet you outside this forum. We have to get to the library. The man at the desk out there said, "I really would appreciate if you would have everybody out of here by 8:45 or 9:00." He has to lock up, and if he can't lock up until everybody's gone. So if we go outside, I'm sure that the candidates would be happy to wait and see you and answer any other questions that they might have. I have one other information for you. This forum is being videotaped and will be on the Fullerton City website probably tomorrow night. The gentlemen tell me it should be ready by then. The League of Women Voters, tonight's sponsors and participants, have not authorized any video or audio recordings other than this one of this forum. If any recordings are made by any member of the audience, we strongly urge that the forum be recorded entirely and not be edited in any way. The FCC requires that videotape of a debate or a forum not be edited and must be broadcast in its entirety, either live or reasonably soon after it takes place. Both the FCC and the League want to ensure that information is not manipulated to create false or misleading impressions. Therefore, no candidate is allowed to use or edit footage for campaign purposes. Now, the normal question, uh, statement at all of these affairs, please turn off your cell phones or dull the sound. Thank you. And we are ready to begin with the first opening statement by our first candidate, Mr. Ferguson.
Hello. My name's Joshua Ferguson. I don't really have a fancy title or a background that I can impress you with right now. Reality is, I'm a parent and a retail clerk here in Fullerton. I've been here for about eight years. Between my wife and my family, we've been here for about 100 years in Fullerton and around the area. And I'm basically running for city council because I've had enough people tell me they don't feel like their voice is heard at the city. They feel like they're ignored, that certain priorities take precedent over everything else. And I was always told by my father-in-law, who was the smartest man I ever had the displeasure of debating with, that you have to work within a system to change it. You can, even if you just show up at stuff, it doesn't always affect things. You have to make a difference from within a system. And the best way to do that is by running for an office, unfortunately. I don't have the backing, I don't have the fancy flyers and all the stuff that's out there, simply because I am running it by myself. My wife and I are putting our own expense out trying to do this because we want our city to be better for our kids. We don't want to leave, we don't want to have to, we don't want to see the entire dynamic change. So that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Ms. Fitzgerald.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum. My name is Jennifer Fitzgerald, and I'm currently the mayor of the city of Fullerton. The last four years on city council, I think, have been marked by accomplishment. When I was elected four years ago, I inherited a road system that had been neglected, a budget that was out of balance, a police department that lacked strong, permanent leadership, and a community desperately wanted to regain their community pride. In just four years, we've begun tackling the massive job of repaving and repairing our roads. You can see the results all over our community, from the Maple Neighborhood to Gilbert and Commonwealth to Associated to Dorothy and Brookdale. We've balanced our budget, and we've reduced our unfunded pension liabilities through fiscally conservative management and innovation. One of my first votes on city council was to hire Dan Hughes as our police chief, and under his strong leadership, we have strengthened and reformed our police department, making it one of the best in the nation. We've restored our community pride. You have only to look around at the sea of "I love Fullerton" shirts to know that. Fullerton is headed in the right direction, but there is more to do. I'm running for reelection to continue to be a strong voice for Fullerton. We must continue to strengthen our public safety. We need to ensure we maintain a balanced budget. We need to continue to repave and repair our roads, improve our youth sports fields, and make sure that every child in town has a safe park to play in. If I'm reelected, these will be my priorities. I'll work hard to provide community-first leadership on city council. I would be honored to have your vote on November 8th, so I ask you to remember Jennifer Fitzgerald, a strong voice for Fullerton.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett.
I agree with her. Thank you to the League for hosting this particular forum. I'm happy to be here. My name is Larry Bennett. I'm running for city council. I believe that this election's about the future of Fullerton. What city are we going to hand to our kids and our grandkids? Will it be one that's vibrant and thriving? Will it be one where the roads are crumbling and we're mired in debt and we're in decline? I don't want to see the latter, I want to see the former. I've been involved in this city, and from a political philosophy, I came of age and got involved in politics under Ronald Reagan. I believe in personal liberty and personal responsibility at the same time. I think that the citizens, and we've seen this in Fullerton over and over again, are best positioned to solve most of the social problems because we have a vibrant nonprofit community that does address and tackle the problems that we face today. I've served on commissions and committees, and I'm happy to say, of the four that I've served on, three of them did their task, folded, and saved taxpayers' money. Now, when does government ever shrink? And that's really the philosophy that I would bring to city government, making it effective, making it efficient, spending your tax dollars as if they were dollars that I had to earn because I think that's what you would want from an elected official. My kids grew up here in Fullerton. I love this city. My platform's very simple. We're going to fix the streets, the sewers, and the water pipes. I want to address pension reform as a certified financial planner. I think I bring that unique skill set to the table. I can help with the negotiations because I understand how that works. I want to prioritize public safety as a core government responsibility. We're going to look for economies of scale where we can partner with other agencies to save our costs and improve our effectiveness in all the areas of city government. And lastly, I want to change the culture at City Hall to make sure that we're business-friendly. I look forward to answering the questions. Again, my name is Larry Bennett, and I would like your support.
Thank you. Mr. Embriano.
I'd like to thank you for having this forum, and thank the cameraman back there for making me a permanent record of this, and thank all of you for attending. I don't agree with most of the things these people to the left of me have said. I do believe the city of Fullerton's roads are still in ruin. I do believe the city of Fullerton is headed in the wrong direction, and I do believe there's a way to change that, and that is to change the leadership. You know, for decades, we've seen the same names on the telephone poles and on the yard signs, and those same names have endorsed the same people, and those same people have inherited, made us inherit the same problems. Look, ladies and gentlemen, to get $200,000 a year salaried person with $100,000 a year pension for life means they would have had to have 13 and a half million dollars in the bank. That means Dan Hughes, when he retires, he should have had $20,000 a month going into his retirement plan out of his payroll deferment. Now, ladies and gentlemen, that model is the definition of insanity. That is why we're out of money. The system needs to change. It's time to put the screws to the people at City Hall that are running the city into the ground. I'm sorry if I sound negative, but ladies and gentlemen, doing the same thing year after year after year is the definition of insanity if you expect different results. Nothing's changing in this town except for the faces. The infrastructure's going in the wrong direction, businesses are leaving, and high-density housing is taking over, and I'm here to stop that. I'm proposing a moratorium on all new development until we can get a ballot initiative passed through the council, through legal. No more development of more than 10 units per acre or more than two stories without voter approval until we fix our roads and we remove these water restrictions. I'm, I'll be honest, excuse me, I'll be honest with you, I'm tired of business as usual. I've been an activist for over 20 years in multiple cities all over the Southland, and I'm here, and I mean business, and I'm not here to make everybody smile and laugh because we're not playing games anymore. We're in a lot of trouble. We're a couple hundred million dollars in unfunded liabilities heading over a cliff, and we're only doing a mile a year in road repair. We've got 300 miles. My grandkids will be dead by then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Silva.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. Really appreciate it. My name is Casu Silva, and I am very proud to be running for city council. I've lived here in Fullerton for 26 years, and out of those 26 years, 18 of them I've been teaching here in Fullerton. And through that time, I've come to really love our city and be involved with it. In that time, I've been involved with a couple of groups. One of the first groups I got involved with was a group consisting of the police department, the Boy Scouts, and we created the Fullerton Soccer League that initially started to serve 12, 200 kids in Fullerton, but now has expanded to serve over 1,200 kids in four cities. And then along the same trail, as I was teaching, I saw this fabulous nationally-ranked speech and debate team from Fullerton High School. I don't know if you're aware of it, but they're a great team, and I thought, well, why can't we have that at junior high? And so out of, you know, out of saying, "Well, why not?", I started a speech and debate team in Nicholas, and our first year, we raised $10,000 from you, the residents, in four months, and went off to Bowling Green, Kentucky for a competition. Now, I mention these things just to show that I'm actively involved. I don't wait for things to come to me. I go out and find them and create them. And that's the kind of energy that I'm going to bring to the city. I'm not going to wait for someone to say, "Well, this is going on, that's happening, what do we do it after the fact?" I have been talking to many residents, and I've heard what the needs are. And I can, you can count on me to be committed and passionate for the city. I'm going to bring the same type of energy that I brought to some of these projects to the DIA's. And you can count on me to be out there, meeting with you, listening to you, because we have great residents here in Fullerton, and we can use your resources to fix some of the problems, to make things better. So in November, please, I'd ask you to remember Casu Silva for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rans.
Good evening, and I'd like to say I agree. I love Fullerton. Don't you all love Fullerton? I think that's why we're all here tonight. But overdevelopment is threatening many of our neighborhoods and our ability to get around our city without encountering gridlock. As well, a disregard for the wishes of residents is leaving many people feeling abandoned by their elected city officials, whom many say have their minds made up before the public has their say. I came to Fullerton with my partner, Matt Leslie, and we lived in an apartment on Barris Drive across from Golden Hills Elementary. We had some really great neighbors there. But we didn't move far away when we bought a house, a 1924 Spanish-style bungalow, just down the street here on West Wilshire. There we have another great community that we live in. I have a degree in computer science from Cal Poly Pomona, and I commute 30 miles each way to my job as a software engineer. But I still have time to attend city council and planning commission meetings, serve on the Bicycle User Subcommittee, and volunteer with the Friends of the Fullerton Library. I also have plenty of energy to represent you, the good people of Fullerton, much like my neighbors, who are hardworking, community-minded, and just want to be heard and respected by their city council. This election, you have the opportunity to vote for a new majority on the city council. You will be voting to seat three of five council members for the next four years. Now is the time to make a change before one more high-density high-rise gets plopped into another neighborhood. I look forward to hearing your questions tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Sargent.
Thank you for inviting me here this evening. My name is Chuck Sargent. I've been a resident for Fullerton for over 45 years. I grew up here, and I went to Ford School on Richmond Avenue as a child, first grade through sixth grade, went to Wilshire Junior High School, and then I went to Fullerton High School. From there, I proceeded to work with the Fullerton Police Academy, ended up working with Department of Justice and Santa Ana School Police nights. I have experience, I'm applying for this job for city council is what I'm doing because I have the experience. I have over 40 years' experience working with parks and recreation, public works, and running a business for the past 21 years, meeting a budget. I'm an employer. I sign the front of checks, not the backs. I know how to create jobs. I spent a great deal of time this last three weeks visiting with the mayor, Jennifer Fitzgerald, Joe Fells, the city manager, learning about all our projects that we have running now. It's important that everybody who's running for city council understands what projects we're working with now. We don't have one or two, we actually have 40 on the books at this time. And a lot of them are projects that are taking over neighborhoods that people don't agree with. I've talked to people about other things that they just think that city council's not standing behind or they can't get a clear vision of what's going to happen in the future. So my words to those people were, you have my word that if I go to city council, I'm not a Democrat, I'm not a Republican, I don't rule on one side of the fence or the other. I rule in the center. Because I am a homeowner and a native of this town, and I love this town. I was a paper boy here as a kid on Harbor Boulevard. I knew all the businesses like they were my brothers and sisters, fathers and mothers. And now I see things go from an antique town to a high-end entertainment night Friday through Sunday, 5,000 visitors every weekend. You need a city council member who's had his feet on the ground for so many years and grew up in this town who understands change is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mansouri.
Thank you, the League, for hosting such incredible conversation. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Good evening. My name is Jonathan Mansouri. I am a former middle school science teacher. I'm a community organizer and the regional manager for a nonprofit that's national. I'm a proud son of immigrant parents. My mom's from Spain, my father's from Iran, and they came here to open up a business, start a family, to have a better future for my sister and I. They definitely showed me the value of working hard for your dreams and treating everyone with respect. They asked me to dream big. They asked me to dream big, and I thought I was going to be a doctor, never thought about politics, was, you know, studying to be a doctor. Clearly, I'm not today. I, after graduation, I became a teacher. I became a middle school science teacher, and I created a coding and a computer science program to make sure that my students have that opportunity for the future economy. I realized very quickly, though, that my students didn't have the resources to become successful, and I started focusing on the issues in their schools and in their communities, and I focused on becoming a community organizer. But my story's not unique, and a lot of the issues that we see in our community, I deeply feel and I deeply care about. I see a diverse community here in Fullerton that we want to protect, we want to preserve, but we also believe in the promise and the possibilities of our city and our future generation. I'm running to usher in a new era of government that is more accountable to more communities in Fullerton, that is aggressively innovative in how we are identifying and solving our problems, and making sure that we're creating a city that we can, that all of our families can thrive in, that we can live, that we can work, that we can study here. As a community organizer and as a former teacher, I will continue to fight for our children, continue to fight for our families, and continue to fight for our communities. We're hearing so many issues at the doors that we deeply feel and deeply care about. What I will be prioritizing is improving our infrastructure, making sure that we are addressing our development concerns, making sure that we are diversifying our economy in our downtown, and also addressing our homelessness issue. Thank you so much, everyone. My name is Jonathan Mansouri.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker.
Good evening.
Oh. Microphone works well. It's good to see all the seats full here this evening. Thank you for coming out. I believe, I'm a current city council member, and I believe that cities should be about service delivery, a number of key services that municipal entities deliver. You know, Fullerton and much of Orange County are among some of the dense, most densely populated areas in our nation, in the United States. Fullerton is currently a built-out city. Infill development is really what should be focused on. I drove north from South County to just barely make it in time for this meeting, so we all are aware of the traffic density that we encounter in our lives daily. New developments and projects need to be good neighbors. Too long-established neighborhoods and property owners should be respected and heard and listened to. Are you listened to? There is an agenda to aggressively urbanize our city, and everyone has mentioned how much they love Fullerton. Why would we want to change Fullerton beyond recognition? What is it that needs changing at this point? Are you listened to? Our mayor established new rules at council meetings, allowing only three minutes per speaker, even at public hearings, something I had never encountered before. A majority of the council also passed new rules which have expanded opportunities for lawsuits against our city. Pensions are cannibalizing city budgets, starving infrastructure, and proper maintenance of public assets and public spaces. I will listen to you. I am the representative of the residents in our cities. A lot needs to be changed. I've been locked in my time on the council the last four years in a three-to-two minority. We need help by getting people to understand what service delivery really is in a city. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Ms. Kapinski.
Thank you for having us this evening and for attending, everybody. Everybody's mentioned everything. We all love Fullerton, that's why we're here. So we all want the infrastructure fixed and the high-density to stop, so I don't want to repeat what we've all said, so I'll tell you about me. I'm a housewife, or I've been a housewife for the past 25 years. I'm now a union ironworker, which is a big change, but I like change for myself. But my past 25 years as a housewife in Fullerton, and the 20 before that as a child in Fullerton, because I've lived here my entire life, but as a housewife, I've had special needs children. And when you have five children, you have special talents, and those are, you're an excellent negotiator and a conflict, you're a master at conflict resolution and scheduling and budgeting, medical issues. You just become a master of all trades. And because of being a housewife, and I know people look at that like, "A housewife? What do you have to bring to the table?" How many of you out there have mothers who are awesome? Okay? They did it all. And in my time as a housewife, I've been a volunteer at my church, and I've been part of Republic Women Federated, and president of an organization, and a volunteer at the school. So I didn't just idly sit by and knit. I took care of my family. I have three adult children who live in Fullerton, and they all like me. So if you can get adult children, you know, a 24, a 22, and a 19-year-old who still like you, you did something right. So, and my oldest son joined the Marine Corps directly out of high school, so I'm very proud of that. So I've raised my children with values that I think are important, that I would bring to the city. And one thing that I also, as a mother of five, is I listen. You have to listen, okay? In order to get to the results that you want, you have to listen to everybody. And I've been listening to some of the communities out there, and they're in distress over the parks. Kids playing in the dark and on the dirt, that needs to stop. Anyways, thank you.
Well, now we are ready for some questions. And Mr. Ferguson, your question is for the first candidate, so is it your position that the proposed new voting districts do not dilute the wishes of downtown residents? Is it your position that the proposed new voting districts do not dilute the wishes of downtown residents?
It's actually my position that I'm against the district voting in its entirety. I don't believe in it. I don't think it, I mean, I think, yeah, it will dilute the wishes of people regardless of what map gets chosen, whether it's the colloquially referred bartender's, barkeep, bar owner's map or not. But if you, all we're going to do is balkanize our cities so we can represent people that look more like us as opposed to represent people across the spectrum, I think the issue is a flawed one. You look at Bell, you look at Detroit, you look at anywhere else, and you see the corruption comes in all colors, and that's the impetus for our district voting. So I'm against the whole premise. I don't really think it's a good idea. I don't think it matters what map you support. I think we should be voting for all of our city council members, so if somebody's doing the wrong job, we can hold their feet to the fire and not just hope that another district does it for them or for us.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Thank you. You may know that our city was sued under the California Voting Rights Act and that we were mandated to go to district elections through our settlement of that lawsuit. We had a really robust community involvement process in the drawing of the maps, and it really came down to two maps that big segments of our community each supported. So our council unanimously supported the map. Yeah, it's, there you go, it's just cutting out. And I don't think it dilutes the vote of the downtown residents. Downtown in this map is connected to various neighborhoods that they are very similar to, and I love that in a process that is naturally divisive, this community has something that unites us in the districting map, our downtown. It's the center of business, transportation, government, culture, and that's where we meet as a community. Anytime there's something big, whether it's First Night or the Friday Night Art Walk, we meet in the downtown. So I'm voting in favor of districts.
Mr. Bennett.
I feel strongly both ways. The truth of the matter is, I was very skeptical about the district process. I think anything that divided the city would be not in the best interest of the city. That being said, I also concur with Mayor Fitzgerald that basically the law says you're going to go to districts. That being said, I think the map that we ended up with, Map 8, was as good a compromise as you can get. It does bring everybody together in the downtown where we all meet, and so I'll be in support of the districting process and Map 8.
Mr. Embriano.
Always a conspiracy with Mr. Embriano, isn't it?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, this Map 8A is a rig job, okay? It's a bar owner's map. It's exactly what it is. It was put together to make sure that they balkanize that segment of town because that, if you realize, most of the development, it gets higher as you get further south in this town, so that's in the bull's eye and the crosshairs for the developers. So they got to make sure that there's no way that there's a cohesive voice against what they've got in store for those people. So I'm totally against Map 8A. So I'm totally against Map 8A. As far as balkanizing this community, the inevitability of the fact that it's here is because of legal action. Now, if the people that ran this city were listening to the residents for decades, we wouldn't have such an off balance of power and ethnicity and socioeconomic strata that are so diverse and so brought apart. So that's what brought this upon us, so we're stuck with it, but this is the wrong map. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I do think that the current map does dilute the power, the voice of the residents from around downtown. You've got five small sections that the residents of downtown are broken up into, literally, street by street, you can walk two or three streets north and south and be in two, three different districts. I mean, we do have to go to districts because of the California Voting Rights Act and I would have preferred something a little more compact, something that would have given, you know, communities of interest a little more say in what their community's going to be like. So having said that, I mean, this is going to come up in the ballot, but I just wish that the downtown residents would have a little stronger voice in what their neighborhood's going to look like. Now, it's broken up into five small chunks and it'll be hard for them to have a powerful, active voice.
Ms. Ranz.
Yes, it's true that Fullerton was ripe for California Voting Rights Act challenge, however, it wasn't mandated, it was a choice. The council agreed to the settlement. They agreed to all the terms of the settlement, but what they did is they gamed the agreement in the settlement by forcing one of the worst gerrymandered maps they probably could have come up with. And yes, absolutely does divide our downtown five different ways. Mr. Silva and I are both impacted by that, Mr. Ferguson's impacted by it. They selected a poorly conceived map that divides our downtown neighborhoods into five different districts. It gerrymanders a safe seat for two incumbent council members in 2018 and it actually reduces the voting power of one of the plaintiff groups in the northeast. So, yes, it not only disenfranchises voters in the center of the city, but voters to the northeast in the Rolling Hills neighborhood where the Jerry, the special fingers cut out. Thank you.
Mr. Sargent.
My opinion of the district voting is I just think we should listen to the voters and more than that. And let's get a vote from them and see what they say. And as far as me and thinking about what the town, how it reflects on the town or how, what it does to the town, I'm just going to go with the opinion and my position as I want to hear what the voters want and that's where I'm going to stand on that issue. I'll wait for the voters on the ballot to vote and if they say let's do it, let's do it. If they say don't do it, we're not going to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Mansouri.
So I'm hearing two questions and I want to make two points to this single question. One, this is not just the legal thing to do, this is the right thing to do. We got to make sure that we have a council that is representative and appropriately representing all of our communities in Fullerton. The second point, I do not think the current map that is going to be on the ballot represents downtown residents. We've talked to dozens of them at this point. And I am supporting the other map that was not put on there that included multiple stakeholders and appropriately had community meetings throughout the entire city and helped in creating that map. Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker.
As a sitting council member, where all 140,000 residents in our city are my constituents, it is a bit of a step back to consider that only 20% of those would be after the separation into districts. So it's something that I think will have maybe some unknown ramifications over time. At each census, the lines will be adjusted for population shift and changes, so maybe as soon as 2020, the existing map can be modified by the council at that time. I'm concerned that going to districts really oriented the way that these are through the California Voting Rights Act may increase concentrations of residents by race, culture and heritage in certain sections of our city. I'm not sure it's a real healthy thing. We're in a day of much intermarriage, we're in a day in multicultural.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? I was not in favor of districts, but I think the council members of the entire city, the larger companies, we're all trying to. The voters could vote for us because most people, once they get in office, they want to continue getting in office, okay? So they're only going to try to make the 20% that vote for them happy. One thing that I don't like about the districting is that to say that if you go, everything is in downtown, okay? So we're all focused on downtown and other parts of the city get neglected. If you drive back through them, you can see it from the parks and everything. And I understand why they want representation, but I don't think that they're going to get it by districting. So I agree with Josh and Jane and everybody.
Okay, we're now ready for question two and this will be first to Ms. Fitzgerald. Question two for Ms. Fitzgerald. Do about the unsustainable public safety employee pensions.
Well, unfunded pension liability of public employees is a major issue in this state and I am proud that this city council has really aggressively targeted that. You know, when I was first elected, we were only funded for pensions at about 69% and now our largest group of employees is funded at 80%. When I was elected, only, public safety was only funded at 61% and now it's funded at 69%. And we need to continue to do more. We've done a lot to reform the contracts with our employees, making them pay a greater share of both their retirement benefits and their healthcare benefits and I think we need to continue to do that. There are many cities that right now are going out for sales tax increase measures because they can't balance their budget and I'm so proud of the fact that in Fullerton we have a balanced budget and we're reducing our unfunded pension liabilities.
Mr. Bennett.
This was one of my driving issues for becoming involved in the city council race. I'm a certified financial planner by background, actually install, administer and maintain every type of qualified plan you can think of, including defined benefit plans. I understand how they work, I understand when they're underfunded that they're a problem and that's a topic I'm willing to take to the labor groups. I have, in speaking to police and fire, talked about the issue of not getting ahead of the unfunded liability. I've essentially made the argument to them and not been tossed out of the room, that it's in their best interest that they come to the table and we talk and negotiate either slowing of the accrual or a sharing of the cost on a go-forward basis because frankly, I don't think investment rates of return are going to pull us out of the hole that we're in. It's going to take major changes. In order to do that in California, it's a negotiation and you've got to come to the table and get agreement from both parties. That's what I think I can do in terms of bringing people together to solve that problem.
Mr. Embriano.
All right, how about that, is that better? All right, well, you know, I have to say that I don't know what planet these people are living on, but it certainly seems to me like they gave the 35th floor suite at the Bellagio to the unions at the table last time around. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't know if you've got the math I parlayed here a little while ago, but to come out with $100,000 retirement for the rest of your life, you've got to have well over $10 million in a 10-year treasury. Now, let me tell you something folks, that translates to $20,000 a month out of your paycheck in your retirement plan. We're giving raises, we need to put the screws to these people. We can't keep giving away the farm because look what's happening to our infrastructure, that's where all the money's going. So to say that we've improved things or we've made a dent is like saying, I just urinated in my swimming pool and I adjusted the pH. Thank you.
Mr. Silva.
All right, here we go. Tess, all right. Yes, the pensions are a concern up and down the state and I agree with Mr. Bennett here that we have to go to our employees and be willing to talk and communicate and share some of the cause because those are all negotiated and, you know, prior council, prior people, whatever negotiated these and when we get on board, we're going to have to look at some of these and say, okay, wait a minute, we can't sustain these costs and we've got to go back and sit at the table with them and be willing to say, look, here are the numbers. We've got to have a little more sharing of the costs, we've got to, we have to adjust what we're doing or else we're going to lose employees and we're going to lose our services. So I really do believe that we can go to the table and work with some of our, you know, labor unions and strike a deal that will serve them and serve our residents.
Ms. Ranz.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement. There's only so many things, there's three pieces you can play with. You can play with changing the accrual, you can change the amount that the employees pay in or their percentage that they pay in, or you can levy taxes to make up for the difference. Some of the limitations there are on the employees' part is there are state laws that limit how much we can do. So I can understand why some cities might have gone to levying taxes even for short term until some of those state laws change, but understanding that there's three pieces that come into play and to balance them out is, you know, I think that's why we're all in agreement on this issue because there's some really limited options.
Mr. Sargent.
Thank you. Is my microphone, can you hear me? I had a meeting today with the city manager in regards to sustaining the situation with the pensions and it's my understanding that we have a lot of people that were waiting to retire and we can't do anything with their pension until they retire. Now, on new hires, we could sustain and get to that point because we'll have control to do that and we could go to them at that point and ask them to donate more of their money in to sustain, but for the people you have sitting there now, we can't change that. They get that money until they're retired, so you cannot sustain that part of it. So that's my position on it, you cannot sustain it. The only one you can sustain is the new hires because they have to put more of their money in in order for that to happen.
Mr. Mansouri.
So we've been having really great conversations with public safety about this and we got to think through the future sustainability and long-term thinking of our city. At the same time, we got to make sure that we are considering retirement, just as much as we are considering everyone's retirement in this room and making sure that we have a healthy retirement when we are older. And this is also about making sure, we also have to make sure that we are increasing our revenue in our city by diversifying our portfolio of what we have to offer in Fullerton, what we have to offer in our local government and that is how we are making sure that we are balancing our budget very effectively. Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker.
I disagree with our mayor's Pollyanna appraisal of our current status in the city. One of the reasons that the funding percentage may have recovered briefly is that we're committing far larger contributions to pay down those liabilities. That's cannibalizing the rest of the budget and we all see the effects of that. I'd urge everyone here to read a recent Wall Street Journal article on CalPERS. It shined a light on the off-the-books costs, estimates necessary to fund these pensions. The real cost of paying for these defined benefit plans is much higher than publicly available funding percentage estimates, sometimes multiples larger. These are like annuities and what's really important is do we have the funds to pay them?
And Ms. Kapinski.
I agree again with much of the people up here. We do need to possibly renegotiate with the current plans that they have, but for the new hires, I would suggest something different. We can't take away what we've already agreed upon to our current employees, but the public sector unions need to kind of be brought into the private sector realm and get on the same page because they deserve a retirement and I fully believe that, but they also need to realize that we need to maintain our city at the same time. So future hires, I might put in a different bracket, maybe a 401K or something, but something does need to change.
Okay, Mr. Ferguson.
The numbers were kind of interesting that were 80% or 69% funded on some of our pension liabilities, but the numbers that are usually ignored is how much money are we missing, how much is that of? How many millions of dollars are we talking? When you look at public safety pensions, they typically get, I think it was what, 30% after a certain number of years, so they get 90% of their pay after 20, 30 years on the job. And then a lot of times they'll go to another department and they'll do the same thing and they'll do the same thing and so you get to a point where we have these 100,000, million-dollar pensions that we cannot afford. That's why we're doing so much high density, that's why we're changing the face of our town, because we have to make up the tax revenue for these unfunded liabilities. So it has to change entirely, not just around the sides. It has to be defined contributions, not defined benefits, otherwise the system will never change. You can tinker with it, but you have to fundamentally change the structure of how we pay these things out.
Thank you. Our next question now goes to Mr. Bennett and it is, what are your plans for affordable housing?
Well, I think it's a challenge for our kids to be able to buy a home here in Fullerton and quite frankly, the only way you're going to in Fullerton get more affordable housing is to have greater density in some areas. You can't, for example, take an acre lot and put a building on it today and think that you're going to sell it for somewhere around 500,000, it's just not going to happen. So that's the balancing act that we have to do as leaders. We have to decide, you know, in what areas are we comfortable with a higher level of density? And for me, that's probably going to be some limited areas, closer to the transportation center, closer to the colleges, closer to the freeways. I don't think we want to put high density all over Fullerton, but in order to get more affordable housing, we're going to have to allow for development that includes more units on the acreage that we have in the infill development that we're doing.
Mr. Embriano.
I don't know if any of you have ever heard the high cost of cheap health analysis of what Walmart's done, but when they pay the part-time people very low, the government has to step in and subsidize the healthcare and all the other costs associated with the family. The same thing happens with affordable housing when the government gets involved. The only way to handle this problem is for the government to stay out of it and let the market handle itself. If you can't afford to live in Fullerton, then try to live somewhere that's on the outskirts or somewhere else. I don't live on Lido Island, I'd love to. I quite frankly don't have $10 million to buy a place with a boat slip, although I would love to have that. So is it the city's responsibility, is it incumbent upon the taxpayers to fund my appetite for nice things? No. The private sector, the private markets, the private market dynamics are the solution to this problem. And building this up and hire, these apartments that just got approved last night, they're three grand a month, they look like a bunch of boxcars stuck on top of each other. I would never pay three grand a month to live in that thing. People are out of their mind if they think that that's affordable and that's going to be the solution.
Mr. Silva.
You know, and this is another tough item that we have to deal as leaders, but if we do really are looking at having affordable housing, then we do have to build it somewhere. And I would agree with Mr. Bennett that we have to find the right lots that we can have somewhat dense housing. It can't be in every open lot, but if we're up to having housing that our kids, that our friends can move and be part of our great town, then we have to look at that. And I think that there can be a balance. In knocking on a lot of doors this last few months, there has been a lot of people who have talked about what's with all this development and they're upset at the development, but they're more upset at the high, the volume of it, the density of it. And I think if we go to them and say, look, let's shrink it, let's balance it, some residents might be open to some dense housing in certain areas, but not everywhere. But if we're up to having affordable housing, we're going to have to make the tough choices and that's one thing I can do.
Ms. Ranz.
Yeah, the high-density housing that Mr. Bennett referred to is actually providing any affordability. As Mr. Embriano pointed out, yes, we're looking at, essentially it's a $2,500 price point for a two-bedroom apartment. That is not meeting our needs and there's no opportunity for subsidized housing beyond the projects that use the last little bit of the redevelopment. little bit of the redevelopment set aside. So what we, our best plan, our best plan for being able to provide truly affordable housing is, is supporting what is currently in town that is in reality affordable. So there's a couple of things that go into play. One is we can use our CDBG funds to rehab and maintain our existing apartments that are already here in town. And as well, one of the problems with the new high-priced projects coming in, and one of the concerns of the 600 block West Commonwealth project, is that it's creating gentrification or the cost of the homes to go, or, excuse me, of the currently affordable rentals to increase or be completely pushed out.
Mr. Sargent.
I'm going to agree with Mr. Silva. I did find out today that there is $25 million in play to do affordable housing in, in the city of Fullerton. But I do agree with him that the places that we build it, we have to be mindful of the residents that live in those areas. But I do agree with him on that fact.
Thank you. Mr. Mansouri.
I absolutely agree with that as well. We're hearing this a lot when we're talking to families, and, and we deeply feel it as well. We, we don't think that the current plan is doing enough, though, for affordable housing. So we've got to make sure that if we're thinking about development, we've got to think about smart and responsible development. We've got to think through these issues ridiculously. Because we've got to ask ourselves as well, what kind of city do we want to be in 20 years? What kind of city do we want to be for our, for our students, for our kids? When we're thinking through, you know, and I want to guarantee that if you grew up here, if you have kids here, if you want to open up a business here, if you studied here, you can live here affordably. That is the city that we need to be. Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker.
You know, my thinking on affordable housing changed significantly a few years ago when I perused a financial report by Kaufman and Broad Homes, a major home builder in our region. Among its many divisions in the financial report, by far, the highest profits was their Affordable Homes division. There's a lot of political power behind this industry, building affordable housing. They received large federal tax credits, a lot of local government participation, and churning and modification of agreements over time. It winds up yielding less housing and less affordability. I for one trust a free market and less regulation is the best way to provide quality homes at the best prices.
Ms. Kapinski.
I tend to agree with Mr. Whitaker about the free market. And some of the developments that have been proposed in Fullerton so far, they're not affordable housing. As Mrs. Rans said, $2,500 for a two-bedroom apartment. We do have some areas where it is affordable. And if there was some way to entice those owners of those apartments to fix them up, make them more hospitable to the tenants, that would be nice. But we do have a lot of affordable housing. And I too would like, in 20 years, the city to kind of still be the city that I know and love now, so.
Mr. Ferguson.
Okay. I don't mean to be pedantic, but when we keep talking about affordable housing, we're talking about affordable apartments. And while some people choose to live in apartments or choose to rent, I rent myself because I can't afford a house here in Fullerton. The reality is when we look at how we build these things, we're not looking at what people need, we're looking at a lot of fancy numbers and how much is a developer going to make. If you look at some of the more charming houses in downtown Fullerton area, you'll realize that they were built out of the Sears catalog for several thousand dollars, and everybody loves those houses. Now we want everything to be giant developments and giant places where people can live in one small community. But the reality is that we're not looking at long-term longevity, we're not looking at microhousing, we're not looking at things that are actually useful for younger generations. We're looking at the same tried and, you know, ridiculous system that we've been doing for generations. It's ill-conceived central planning, cram as many people into smaller areas as we can and hope for the best. You know, if you want to have actual community, you need to build housing where people actually will have a stake in your town. I find it insulting that somebody here said that, sorry, that I should leave if I can't afford to live here.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
The city council had $29 million in housing bonds that we needed to use to invest in workforce housing. And I'm proud that we've done that through public-private partnerships that bring housing opportunities to young people, to seniors, to people in the workforce, and to our veterans. And they haven't all been apartments. We've provided houses for veterans. We've also provided houses for, for people in the workforce through a great partnership with Habitat for Humanity. And I agree with Mr. Mansouri that we are a better community for providing housing opportunities for people on all ends of the economic spectrum.
Thank you. Our next question goes to Mr. Embriano. What is your position on closing Nutwood and building College Town?
Oh, boy. Did any of you see me at the planning commission meeting? That's what generated the ordinance that Fitzgerald floated to shut the tripods down and stick them in the back of the room and limit the clapping and holding signs in the front. I was absolutely appalled that they had the audacity to try to ram that through. That was insanity. They want to put 10-story buildings, shut down a freeway. Have you been on the 57 at 3 o'clock in the afternoon? I mean, come on. These people got to be out of their mind to think that that's a good solution. And you want to know something? 95% of the United States is rural open space. Don't tell me we're out of land. Get into an airplane and look around. We're being conned, folks. That College Town thing, if that thing goes through, well, actually, it's never going to go through because I won't let it happen. How's that?
Mr., please, no applauding. You may applaud the, all of candidates at the end. Mr. Silva.
Yeah, I think College Town right now, that is a huge project that was trying to, people tried to ram it down, the residents without going out there and really talking with them and see what was out there. If they would have done that, like I said, I've been out knocking on doors in that area and, and that keeps coming up. And they go, what are they trying to do? Who are they conning? Who do these, you know, they're talking about developers, they must have certain people in their pocket. So if we're going to build something like that or consider it, we've got to go out to the residents and see what they want to do and work with them. And, and if we want to build something, it's got to be kind of in agreement with everyone. Not just, hey, well, we got this developer coming and we want to build these 10-story buildings, then we're going to close the street off. But what about the residents? What about the, the, the nature of, of our city? What about the, the, you know, the quality of life we're going to have? So, yeah, I mean, without a proper process, without properly going out to the residents, you know, that would be a hard project to even look at right now.
Ms. Rans.
I agree with the lack of public process on that project. As an example of that, when I ran in 2012, we were, as all the candidates were handed these maps of the College Town plan, which included the closure of Nutwood. They had public meetings after that. And that was what they brought, what they continued to push for. The public input was just a charade so they could say, we checked that box, we had our public input. And there was never changes made to address the concerns of the neighborhood. And we're still seeing that with projects now. And that's really why one of the major problems that you're going to see with these projects everywhere, that not only are the plans excessive intensity.
Mr. Sargent.
Thank you. I was out campaigning yesterday, and I was going down State College Avenue. And I looked over behind the fence and real high up was a post that said, "Our Town," not, not College Town. So I went through neighborhoods to find that house, took me like an hour. So I finally found that house and knocked on the door, and the man came outside and I had about an hour discussion with him, why he felt that he didn't want that across the street. He's 65 years old, he's on a fixed income budget, that is his last place he'll ever live. He doesn't want the town to shut off freeway unrest, make it harder for him and his wife to get to the hospital and go back and forth. I felt really bad for the guy because he says, nobody's listening to us. They're just going to do this. I said, no, somebody's listening to you, I'm here right now. Give me your vote and I promise you, I'll stand in front of College Town, I don't agree with it.
Mr. Mansouri.
So I agree with Mr. Silva in the sense that we've talked to hundreds of residents in the, in the part of town in that community. And I feel that concern very deeply. We're starting, you know, we're starting to see that this plan is, is putting a, a quick solution to two things. One is that this is a commuter, commuter campus, so traffic is a huge concern. And two, parking issues, it doesn't necessarily address it. So at its current state, we don't believe that this is a smart plan, we don't believe that Nutwood should be closed. And we're hearing this from every resident, I, you know, on both sides of the spectrum. Thanks.
Mr. Whitaker.
Well, I live on the west side of town. And when I was mayor, when this trial balloon was first floated, I thought that a lot of the people living just to the west of that area would appreciate closing Nutwood so you wouldn't have a lot of cut-through traffic. I see the streets were really in bad repair there. But I held a talk around town there, and I heard from the residents, I do listen and I adjust. And one of the big selling points on this plan was to join the two campuses together by having the city surrender Nutwood to make that happen. The answer is much simpler, a grade separation. Run underneath Nutwood sidewalk area wide enough for bicycles and for pedestrians. You could actually join the two campuses without interrupting traffic. And I've heard loud and clear from people in that area, I am not supportive of that plan.
Ms. Kapinski.
I live on Nutwood. Not, not supportive of that plan. Cal State Fullerton is a commuter school, that was why, I was going to say that anyway. And I, it's a terrible idea. College Town is, it might sound good in theory, but it doesn't fit in Fullerton, this isn't LA, we don't have the space. It's not within the character of Fullerton. So, but back to Nutwood, I absolutely am against closing it off. And if I'm on council, it won't happen.
Mr. Ferguson.
Musical microphones. For brevity, I'm against it. I, there's, every talking point I have has been said, I've just, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Ms. Fitzgerald.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of closing Nutwood, but I am in favor of planning for our future. And Cal State Fullerton is currently 40,000 students, they're set to go up to 50,000 students. There's nothing we can do at the city level to stop that. It was said earlier that this is a commuter campus. I don't want it to be a commuter campus. I want those students to be part of our community. I don't want them to take their lives and, and their expendable income and what they have to offer out to other communities. I want to be able to make that work for the community. So what College Town was, was a planning process that allowed us to talk about the future of our community. And I think that's healthy to have those community discussions. And so I want to look at that kind of planning. We need to fix the parking as well in the east part of town. And I am trying to get OCTA and Cal State Fullerton to create a strong partnership to get kids out of their cars. Kids are the most likely to use transit. And we've got the busiest MetroLink station in town, so I'm hopeful they can create that partnership.
Mr. Bennett.
So the first stop in the public hearing process for College Town was the planning commission. And guess what? I sit there, as does Mr. Penigraff over there. And I want you to know loud and clear, despite what you've heard and the media and some blogs around town, there was not an attempt to jam through the College Town plan. As a matter of fact, when it first showed up at the planning commission, our thought process was, close Nutwood? Are you crazy? The two intersections above and beneath it are F, they're not going to get any better than F, and if we close Nutwood, it just gets worse. We also had concerns that we'd be losing retail space if we took out the, the centers there where the Smart and Final is currently located. And so, you know, as a city, all we can say to Cal State Fuller, or Cal State Fullerton, which is state property, is no, you can't have our street. And we can also say, we'd like to engage in a dialogue. And if you want to underpass it, as Mr. Whitaker said, great. If you want to overpass, the students over it, great as well. But we need to find a solution that does not involve taking out our retail space there, does not involve taking out Nutwood.
Thank you. The next question now is for Mr. Silva. What is your position on the Hunt Branch Library?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, interesting because we've actually, I've actually met with a few parents and a few groups from that area. We want to make it a resource for, for our town. We, they don't want to sell it, and I don't want to give it away and sell it. Some of the parents that I've talked to out there, they'd like to see it become somewhat of a community center. We've been talking to some other groups who, maybe an art center where we can have art classes. But we have to find a way to keep that, that asset, you know, it's, it's one of the few assets we have, and it's not being used right now to, to its fullness. And again, being part of that group, some of these moms, you know, you talk about soccer month, with some of these moms, they, they want a place for their kids to go. They want a place for their elementary-age kids to go after school, a safe place. And, you know, we can make it so it does become a safe place. But definitely, I would like to see it saved, and I would like to see it being used as some, some sort of community center, art center, classroom.
Ms. Rans.
Yes, I'm so glad someone asked this question because it's something that's very near and dear to my heart. Because last, when I ran in 2014, one of the issues I ran on was not closing the children's library. And, oh, gosh, that was back in 2012. And since then, two of the other people who are currently on the council who ran on that position as well did close the children's library. It was closed initially temporarily because of an emergency problem. But after that, then the council decided they would lease it out at a cut rate. Since then, the library board has been waiting and waiting and waiting for the council to kick up the funding, to refund the, start funding the Hunt Library appropriately as well, to fully fund this library. And it's really great that, hey, so Silva and other community members are across the board from education, from arts, from the school district. A lot of people are looking at that as a really great opportunity for a unique use that complements the library.
Thank you. Mr. Sargent.
I agree with Mr. Silva on his opinion of what to do with that.
Thank you. Mr. Mansouri.
I also agree. I want to make sure that this could be a community hub for that community. And, you know, I will continue to join to make sure that we can find innovative solutions to make sure that our families and our students can enjoy the Hunt Library.
Mr. Whitaker.
I've argued with the majority of the council many times on this. We already have the Hunt, the Hunt Branch. It's architecturally significant, it's historically significant. It has been evaluated by those who want to do a property grab on this, evaluated as a retail site. They've argued that it's tucked back in a neighborhood and poor visibility, as though those would be a problem for a library. These same characteristics that they're trying to denigrate the Hunt with make it an excellent location for a library on the west side of our city. It's really a crime that has been closed these last few years. And that's why the majority of the council needs to change.
Ms. Kapinski.
I agree that the west side does need a center, so I would like it to become a library again.
Mr. Ferguson.
Sort of the problem with going so late is everyone keeps hitting things. Do I have to get closer? Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I think the one thing, the things that I read was that the library was going to be, they were trying to sell it off in like a no-bid contract, like a sweetheart deal to somebody. And I think that's sort of a problem. If you want to use it as a library, use it as a library, let's make sure we're using our resources adequately. But that's sort of the problem we have in this town is that we don't. And then we have money issues, and then we get rid of things that we need and people want. So I'm going to agree with several people down the road that, yeah, library on my side of town would be pretty awesome.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
I think we're asking the wrong question. I think we need to be asking about library services for our entire city and what is best for every neighborhood in our city. We've got 1,200 kids who live down in the Gem District in the east part of town who have no library, and most of them have no way to get up to either our main library here or over to a branch on the west side. Also in the west, we've got people all the way down on Orange Thorpe that have a hard time getting to Hunt Branch. So I'm not wedded to a building, but what I am wedded to is the idea that as a community, we need to come together and figure out how we provide library services to every neighborhood in this community.
Mr. Bennett.
I can't add to this conversation. I agree with what Jennifer said, I've agreed with the fact that we need something on the west side. And I'll leave it at that, I think that's what we need to work towards.
Mr. Embriano.
Boy, they really tried to cook this one up a couple of months ago. Ladies and gentlemen, that place, the whole saga surrounding the Hunt Branch Library should be called the courtship of Jennifer Fitzgerald. What's going on is the Grace Ministries is now occupying that facility for $1,500 a month. I can't get a one-bedroom apartment at the Shooting Gallery for that price. Ladies and gentlemen, we were told that they need $1.3 million a year to fund that, Ladies and gentlemen, we were told that they need $1.3 million a year to fund that, to open it up. I did a Public Records Act request. The utilities on that place are a couple grand a year. The cost for labor is still being paid because most of the people have been transferred. That was a scheme that was cooked up to unload that. And I have on record, on the Fullerton Informer and on the YouTube channel, there was going to be a sole-source bid on the sale of that property to Grace Ministries. That place has been given to us as an endowment for the residents and for our children. It needs to be reopened, and we got to stop cooking the books when it comes to inflated estimates of what it's really going to cost to put something back in operation. Thank you.
Please, no applause. Our next question will be for Ms. Rans. And if this is a -- it's a little longer. Marijuana is a number-one problem in schools in cities that have marijuana dispensaries. Even if the state recreational-use ballot measure passes, cities can decide their own local ordinances on whether to allow any marijuana businesses. Would you vote for or against marijuana dispensaries in Fullerton?
So this item recently came up. I'm guessing Dan Camarami is somewhere in the audience? He's been paying, waiting for this answer online all week. So this did come before our council. They had an opportunity to put this before the voters, as many cities are doing in Orange County and throughout California. And I would support that. Unfortunately, our council did not move forward. Their reasoning was that they wanted to wait to see how the statewide initiative on recreational use of marijuana settled down before they proposed an ordinance on medical use, growth for medical use marijuana dispensaries.
Mr. Sargent.
Well, I think that that is on the ballot, and it's going to be voted. That was the first question I got at the high school last week. Am I voting for marijuana?[723.82][723.82](Laughter) Yes, I'm voting for marijuana. I think we already have dispensaries throughout Santa Ana. We have a lot of them. And they are going to keep, they are going to continue to be brought to each city, no matter if we like it or not. It's happening now. I'm not just going to come up and just vote for it, no. I'd like to hear on the ballot what the people think, what they want. And it's a pretty simple subject. It's not a hard subject. They're pushing this real hard with the state and approving dispensaries, and it's going wild. So I would have to say, at this point, let's just see what happens with the ballot.
Mr. Mansouri.
I agree that this is something that will be coming, but I want to make sure that we are prioritizing and thinking through two things. One is the safety of our children, to making sure that we're thinking about this and it's proximity to schools and communities. And two, to make sure that we have the opportunity to regulate this within our city as a business. Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker.
Well, I'm someone who's never been a drug user and don't really even understand the attraction. However, in my first election, my first campaign for council, there were warnings and scare tactics out there that I was going to open up dispensaries on every corner in Fullerton. Now, I've been on the city council for six years. It hasn't come up. But the statewide initiative is coming at us. Fullerton isn't an island. Prohibition does do strange things, and we could find our city ringed with a lot of dispensaries if we ban them. So I think the council is wise to go slowly on this. I am an avowed supporter of medical marijuana. I've seen and talked to too many people and understand how it provides real relief, and I wouldn't want to get between them and their physician.
Ms. Kapinski.
I too would want to wait and see how it plays out in the vote. Personally, I'm going to vote no, but if it comes down to a yes, I would want it to be regulated. And like the hookah lounges, I don't want it to be anywhere near the students. We can put it on the outskirts in industrial areas. But personally, I would rather it not happen, but we might have to take the tiger by the tail before it gets out of control.
Mr. Ferguson.
I think it's sort of a false question. The reality is that the worst thing that our kids face in schools is bad schools. I mean, falling apart schools, lack of reading, lack of math. I'm a parent of three. I will vote for this because I can raise my children and teach them not to do certain things the way my parents taught me and their parents taught them. I had a good friend who had both MS and ALS, and marijuana was the only thing that allowed him to eat, other than the entire table of drugs that he had. And to deny him that because we're worried about how we have to raise and talk to our children is sort of insulting. So they made a good point that, yeah, we're going to have them lined everywhere. We're going to seaweed everywhere. But we already do. Go to the bar scene at any time, any night, and you're going to smell it. It's already in our town. By banning dispensaries, by regulating it, by making sure that we can take care of and see what's happening and where it goes, by doing that, we can make sure it's in a safe way to do it. Read the proposal. It's not near schools. It's not near parks. It's not near residential. It's kept in isolated areas where it's smartly done, and so we don't have it just pop up everywhere.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Well, I am a mom of two little kids, and I think that our kids have enough of a hard time these days making a success of their lives. And I see the legalization of recreational marijuana as yet another distraction toward their success. And I would not be in support of marijuana businesses in town.
Mr. Bennett.
I did not inhale in college or post-college. And, you know, that was the message I sent to my kids, that drugs, whether they be recreational marijuana or something much harder than that, are bad for your lives. They can kill you. They can certainly distract you. They can make you nonproductive. That being said, do I care what you smoke? I actually don't. But I don't want marijuana dispensaries in Fullerton either. And we've taken steps on the Planning Commission to make sure that we'll retain local control over any issue of marijuana, whether it's dispensaries or otherwise.
Mr. Embriano.
Well, this one's going to be the $10 million question, and I'm going to give you a direct answer. I do not support the sale of recreational marijuana within city limits. I could tell you right now, I have a bachelor's degree in chemistry and a bachelor's degree in biological science, and I've studied the physiological, the pharmacological, the effects that marijuana has. It's not the same as alcohol. When you get young kids to get involved with this stuff in the adolescent years, it permanently reduces the IQ. There's a lot of conflicting studies out there. But I've seen enough going through college and growing up in Garden Grove to know that the people that got off the tracks and started smoking their brains out never fully recovered. Now, if you start doing this as an adult, just like you want to drink, you want to hit the hard stuff, that's a whole different ballgame. But when you get kids, they're going to get their hands on this stuff because it's right around the corner. Look, folks, everybody here tonight said it's readily available. You can go to Anaheim and buy the stuff. If the kids are going to get it, make them go out, go out of city limits to get it. You know what? Putting liquor stores on the corners as a child is what ruined a lot of my friends growing up. And if we put these things at arms-length from the neighborhoods, it's going to ruin the kids. If people need medical marijuana, I've discussed this at length on my YouTube channel, and I'm supportive of medical marijuana, but not recreation.
Mr. Silva.
Yes, I also am supportive of miracle marijuana, but the recreational marijuana is going to come at us. I mean, all polls show that it's going to pass, and I think we have to be smart enough that if it does come around us, we need to manage it and regulate it. You know, we have to worry about the underground economy. I mean, right now, you know, like I said, it's there. It's out there. And I think by going slow and making sure that if it does come before us, we have local control, we can regulate it, it'll be better for us. But it's coming, and we have to make sure that if it comes, it doesn't ruin our city, it doesn't impact it. But we are in control. We need to be in control of what's coming down the road.
Thank you. Our next question, there were a number of questions proposed about this. One of them was, "Traffic is horrendous already on Harbor and Euclid most of the daytime. What would you do to solve the traffic problems in our city?" Oh, you couldn't hear that? All right. This is Concerns Traffic. And they mentioned that bad traffic on Harbor and Euclid most of the time. And they are asking, "What would the candidates do to solve the traffic problems in the city of Fullerton?" Sargent, this is yours.
What are you, you're asking what?
How are you going to solve the traffic problems in Fullerton? Did you hear me that time?
Yeah, I just, how would I solve the traffic problems on Euclid?
In the city of Fullerton.
Well, that's a loaded question. That really can't be answered by one answer. We have, every area has different traffic problems, so it just depends on what area you're talking about. Some are neighborhoods, some are commercial areas. It just depends what it is.
I think if you wanted to answer in a general way, if there anything you would lead the council to do about traffic problems in the city.
No, I wouldn't have an answer for that.
Mr. Mansouri.
Traffic is getting bad. We're feeling it. I think there's two things that we can do immediately. One is to making sure that we have smart solutions with our lights. The second thing is to making sure that we are encouraging alternative modes of our transportation, not just throughout the city, but also throughout the region. So those are the two ways that I think that we can address our traffic. Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker.
Well, one way you don't solve traffic is by creating even higher and higher density in our neighborhoods. So we have a pedal-to-the-metal approach to the high-rise, high-density development in the city, and we're accommodating these state dictates that we change our neighborhoods beyond recognition and into something that we don't even know. I do support commuting by bicycle. I very much support all the connectivity efforts in the city and in a college city like ours with Fullerton and Cal State Fullerton. I think that can be a big plus. Another thing you don't do is use traffic calming strategies. The planners do this, and they take an arterial that's four lanes, and they reduce it to two lanes. And it creates more parking alongside, but it's an extreme bottleneck. So I think there's a war against the private automobile. I'm not, I'm on the side of the automobile in that war.
Ms. Kapinski.
I agree with everybody else. The lights, the timing of the lights, sometimes I wonder, you know, who's controlling them or they have to get me. But, so I really think that somebody can go up there and readjust for the times of the day.
Mr. Ferguson.
There's not much you can do unless you change the density that we're dealing with. I work off of Harbor Boulevard just shy of Berkeley, and when I leave work, I'll watch traffic backed up to Berkeley, like all the way through downtown. I have literally, my wife works in downtown Fullerton's salon. I have literally beat cars walking to her salon. It can be that bad. And it's going to get worse as more density gets built up. You know, south of Harbor, you'll see, you'll see traffic back up all the way down to Valencia. And there's, until you find better solutions for people to move around, whether it be Uber and Lyft, or you find more parking areas for people to park and sort of commute in with, like San Diego has their little Dart buses that'll move around, or people can park here and go somewhere else, there's not going to be much of a solution that you can have because you need to keep more residents that go down those main arterials.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Yeah, as has been mentioned, signal synchronization is actually a way that we can help ease traffic. And we have to remember, we're not an island in Fullerton. We have a lot of cut-through traffic from La Habra to the north of us, from communities to the south of us, and that's going to be a difficult issue to solve. I do think, as also has been said, that alternative forms of transportation, we need to continue to encourage. And you'll see that the high-density housing that has been approved, for instance, the Lennar project that is 200 apartments in the downtown, they are right next to the train station. And the people who are going in and renting those places are people who commute into LA and want to take the train. We have the busiest MetroLink station in Orange County here in Fullerton. And so I think that as we plan for our future and where those future developments are, we look at the close access to mass transit for those new people living here.
Mr. Bennett.
Well, I don't know that I have a magic wand that's going to cure our traffic problems. I do believe that signal synchronization is part of the problem. Part of it is just, you know, encouraging people to work close to home and live close to home. I'm three miles door-to-door to my office, and I love it. No one will ever get me to commute on a freeway again in the morning. I would suggest more people do that and avail themselves of the public transportation when it's feasible for them.
Mr. Embriano.
Have you folks ever been at a traffic light that was stuck on stupid? Because I'll tell you, I've been at a lot of them. And I want to tell you something. Why hasn't the traffic -- is this thing working? Okay. I mean, honestly, we got computers up the ying-yang, and excuse the French, but we spent how many millions of dollars on computer systems in this city, and we can't synchronize our lights? And then our solution is to build 10-story buildings? That's why I'm proposing a moratorium on development, and that's why I'm proposing a ballot initiative, so we can put the brakes and put the kibosh on this stuff. And that involves no more than 10 units per acre or no more than two stories tall unless we have voter approval. And we need to fix the roads, because I would tell you, I can't go fast in my car because if I do, I might lose control. I mean, ladies and gentlemen, this isn't rocket science. We've got unqualified people running things, doing insane things to us and expecting us to have an answer when there isn't one, except stop the building, synchronize the stupid lights, and knock it off. Or we can triple the price of gas. That might work.
Mr. Silva.
Well, one of the ways, I guess, to fix the traffic on Euclid is maybe listen to 66% of the people who don't want Coyote Hills built with all that traffic coming on. So that might be a way. But if that's not the case, I may look at maybe converting some of our streets into one-way streets. I know that's been talked about, but other than that, I think I agree with Mr. Mansouri, is look at alternative mode of transportation. Let's see if we can, you know, push that and get people out of their cars and into trains, buses, and bicycles.
And Ms. Rans.
I serve on the Bicycle Users Subcommittee, and so I get to participate in a number of traffic engineering courses and analyze different ways of doing things. But as well, besides being a cyclist, I'm also, drive a car, but I'd also like to take public transit when I can. Some things that we need to point out about having, the train station here is very limited on the connections. We need OCTA. We, as Fullerton, needs to push OCTA to pump up their service. They've been cutting service. We're paying a sales tax, all of us, and they're cutting our bus service. And one of the other things to keep in mind is having, when they built that parking structure in our downtown, it actually created more people driving through our downtown at the commuter hours. So we need to coordinate better those kinds of projects. And of course, stop building the high density until you have some way to move the people around.
Okay, thank you. Our next question is for Mr. Mansouri. What are your positions on the development of West Coyote Hills?
This is something that I deeply care about and I have a pretty strong opinion on. I do not think that we should be continuing the development, and I will make sure that if I am on council, that we are doing everything that we can to protect and preserve the public space. This is something that's really important to a lot of residents, not just around Coyote Hills, but throughout the entire cities, to making sure that we're focusing on preserving it.
Mr. Whitaker.
I've supported some development in West Coyote Hills as a way to create financial leverage to clean up the depleted oil field which exists up there. The original plan, which would dedicate 55% of the property to public use, was a clear benefit to me. One thing I'm concerned about with high-rise, high-density construction as opposed to this is that the planned development in West Coyote Hills would have been a one, two, three-story typical-type construction for suburban Fullerton. What they're planning up and down our corridors now, like with the ill-conceived Corin Corridors project, is to allow, I was shocked when I went to a meeting and heard a staffer say, "Well, seven-story building will allow a bonus two stories if they share the profits with the city." And I thought, "What kind of a mercenary activity is this?" So by comparison, West Coyote Hills, it would have been 1 and 1/2 units per acre. Or even if you factored out the 55% gifted to the citizens, it would be about three units per acre, much lower densities.
Ms. Kapinski.
I grew up that, on that part of town, and 40 years ago, a lot of the neighborhoods weren't there yet. They have added to the city. But now that Chevron no longer has use for that land, and, you know, what I would really like is if we can maintain it as a park and use it as a park, but it's not our property. And I think the compromise was that they were going to give us some of it to use as public space and develop it, you know, just in single-family homes, and that I like. But if we could afford to buy it, that would be great, that we could do what we want with it. But since we don't own it, I think we need to compromise with them, but that's not popular, but that's what I think.
Mr. Ferguson.
I love parks as much as an ex-person, but as Kapinski said, it is Chevron's land. The one problem we do run into with it is that we have been compromising with Chevron much to their benefit, and that, if I'm not mistaken, we rezoned a lot of it residential And that, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we rezoned a lot of it residential instead of light industrial. So if we were going to buy the land, now it's much more expensive for us to buy it, whereas before, we might have been able to buy more of the land. My concern with it being a park is who's going to control it? Because we're now spending $10.5 million for the first three phases for Hillcrest, because we've neglected it, run it into the ground after a certain many years. And we don't, we haven't changed the budgetary process to maintain it after the fact. And that's only the first three phases, not the rest. So I'm worried that, yeah, they might build a park at Coyote Hills, but then run it into the ground, and my kids still won't be able to enjoy it. So we need to have a plan of how we're going to maintain it, even if we can build a park. Or if we have to compromise and have some low-density in there, then maybe that's the best solution.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
And in fact, we do have a plan. Since the last election, Chevron and the Friends of Coyote Hills and the city have worked to come up with a compromise that everyone can live with. And the current compromise that is out there sets aside over 300 acres of the 510-acre parcel for open space. It would add 10 miles of trails to the 30 miles of trails that we already have in our city. It would include a nature center and an outdoor amphitheater. The kids of our community could go up there and learn about the habitat and, and nature up there. And I think that's a good compromise. This current plan would set aside, could potentially, in my dreams, set aside all the property east of Gilbert. It would only allow development west of Gilbert. So all of the property east of Gilbert could be saved. And the city has put up the first money, saying that all the park fees generated from West Coyote Hills, that $9 million in park fees would be used to buy out of neighborhoods to help us do that plan.
Mr. Bennett.
It's a pretty good deal we've negotiated with Chevron in this respect. Right now, nobody has access to that land. And they haven't, even though we've owned the Bob Ward Nature Center for, I don't know, 30 years or better. And so this is an opportunity for us to open up, if not all the space, most of the space for the public good. It certainly is going to give us the money to develop the park. Now, y'all got told years ago, if you just voted a certain way, we'd have a great park down in Irvine. And I just like to ask, how's that working out for you? And I think Measure W was kind of like that, too. If you just vote for Measure W, you're going to have a whole park. That was the message given by the proponents of Measure W, but it wasn't actually accurate. So I think where we're at today is about as good as we're going to get. And I think that we need to take that deal and run with it, save as much of the open space as possible. But by golly, we need to open the space so we can all enjoy it.
Mr. Embriano.
What a bunch of nonsense. 30 years we've owned the Robert Ward Preserve, and it's still got a lock on it? What are we spending, $7 million a month on payroll? Fuck, that thing is an earthquake fault, superfund site inhabited by rattlesnakes and rats. And let me tell you something, we probably could have picked it up if they didn't rezone it residential. They turned a dump into a gold mine for Chevron. That's what they did. This council did that. They voted to change the zoning on that property. And let me tell you something, oil and gas land's a lot cheaper to pick up when everything's been sucked out of the ground. You can't tell me that in 30, or 40, or 50 years, since they've been trying to save this place, that the city didn't have the foresight to save up enough money to possibly buy that thing as a park to keep it open? Have you taken a look at the area of Orange County? It's a concrete jungle. There's nothing left. We had the chance, the one last chance against the wishes of the voters. Hey, you got, you got it. It's as evidenced by their council decision. They changed the zoning on it. They basically just thumbed their noses in the will of the voter's face.
Mr. Silva.
Yeah, I would agree with a lot of here that we need to try and save Coyote Hills. I know I've been here 26 years, and I've been hearing about it for 26 years, but I think we all got to, excuse me, come to a point and, and get it, get everyone together and see if we can buy more of it and have more open land, and then, and have it open up sooner than later. And again, we, it's been going on forever, and we should have had the foresight to set aside funds and, and bought that thing by now. It's been going on for a long time. We, we need to make a last-ditch effort to see if we can buy it, and let's get it open.
Ms. Rans.
Contrary to Mr. Bennett's, his opinion, 61% of the voters said no to development at West Coyote Hills. And the council majority ignored the results of the referendum and argued, and still do, that the zoning specific plan and general amendments were not overturned by the referendum. The question is still yet to be determined, possibly in the courts. It's in settlement right now. Then when the council allowed a new project to come forward using a vested tentative tract map, again, assuming that all the approvals are still in place, then they created a questionable entitlement, again, still yet to be determined. But the results of that was upzoning. And now they're negotiating with Chevron at an over-inflated price of that land.
And Mr. Sargent.
I've had, in great detail meetings, with the people downtown about Coyote Hills. And being a person who's run Upper Newport Bay Preserve for the Children Learning Center for eight years, and Carving Canyon Regional Park for five years, I don't think a park is going to work for us, number one, because of our restrictions on water. We, we won't be able to take care of the park the way the park needs to be done. That's impossible. The amount of money it would take the staff that park to, I don't know where we would find it. That's another problem. As far as keeping as open space and not development, keeping it open space and putting trails, I agree with Jennifer Fitzgerald on this. I think they're doing good things, and I think that part of it is going to have to be sold off, because the, the dirt on one side of that area is contaminated. Oil ran through that part of it. It is going to have to be developed. We're not going to go in there and, and clean that soil. That would cost hundreds of millions of dollars to clean that soil. So I believe if it's open space and, and it's, thank you.
Our next question is for Mr. Whitaker. Do you like the current plans for the Hillcrest Park infrastructure?
An appropriate question for me. We love Hillcrest Park. My wife, Linda, lifelong Fullerton resident, went there as, as a child, to the duck pond. She used to love the duck pond on one part of it when she was very young. And we've walked to the hills and trails there for many years. No, I, I don't concur with the nature of the proposed improvements in the park, because I see them as, as breaking with the tradition, the, the WPA, the stones, the, the historic nature of the park. I complained in open session about the bridge. The utility of the bridge is questionable, I believe. A large amount of money will be expended on it, and it has a modern kind of minimalist look to it. And if it is to be the gateway to this grand old park, this 40 acres right in the heart of Fullerton, they needed to pay attention to what came before. So you, you don't, I mean, you do have to embrace the new, but that park really needs to be enshrined in a better way.
Ms. Kapinski.
I think that it's costing too much for what they want to do to it, and that it is too modern looking for that park. I grew up in Fullerton and remember going to, to Hillcrest Park. And it had a certain charm to it, and I think that we're going to lose it and a lot of money at the same time. One of the phases, the engineer estimated it would cost about, you know, $1.3 million, but the bid they took for one phase was $1.7. So it's, it's going to cost a lot more than what they think, if that's what's happening now. So they just need to fix it, just refurbish it. You know, it's, it's a great park.
Mr. Ferguson.
When I saw how much we were spending to revitalize Hillcrest, the first thing I did was call Public Works and Parks Department and ask them, sorry, not car now? And I asked Public Works and the Parks how the park had gotten to that point. And I said straight out, "So do you mean to tell me that the park was basically underfunded? You didn't have staff and management to do this, to keep this park going?" And he said, "Yes." Said, "Okay, so in this giant plan that we're doing to revitalize this park, have they changed your budget, staffing, and all of this to make sure it's maintained afterwards?" He said, "No." Said, "Wow, so we're going to be back, back in the same situation we were before? And we have other parks around town that have the same problems, or where we have to revitalize them." Treslow in Harbor, been closed for 15 years. Nobody knew what was going on. I mean, we're going to keep running into these issues if we don't change the infrastructure of how we do it. So it doesn't really matter how pretty the park is. I'd like it to maintain the, the classic design of it. But if we don't maintain it, we're just going to keep throwing more and more money at the same problems.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Okay, Treslow Park was closed because the gas company had contaminated that area, and it wasn't safe for kids. Moving back to Hillcrest Park, the community, not the city council, decided what would happen to our signature park, our oldest and largest park in Fullerton. And I know Chris Hughes and Molly McClanahan are here today, and they were just two members of the community group that worked for over a decade to try to get the city to pay attention to this beautiful resource. It is not going to be changed, all to modern architecture. The WPA fountain is going to be restored to its original splendor. The war memorials that are there are going to be restored. The grand entrance from Harbor will really fit what is our front door to our park system in Fullerton. I'm excited about this project, and I'm so appreciative of all of the community effort to get us to where we are today.
Mr. Bennett.
Well, certainly, Hillcrest has taken a beating in our effort to save water in the drought. And I think it will benefit tremendously from having, you know, the rehabilitation take place. And, and I think we all should be proud of it. As to maintaining it, you know, I, my landscape used to die off, too, if I didn't water it. But I put in an irrigation system that was modern, up to date. And I think the systems we use in our parks today actually will control for what's the ambient temperature out there? When's the last bit of sprinkler? They're computer-controlled. They're very efficient, effective. I think, give us another year, and Hillcrest Park should look, I think, 100 times better than it does right now.
Mr. Embriano.
You know, when I took my children to Hillcrest a number of years ago, I thought it was in Detroit. By looking at the condition of that property, it, it's really, it's really unimaginable how a city with this kind of a tax base and revenue stream could allow something to go into that type of disrepair. When I found out that Laguna Lake was leaking about 60,000 to 70,000 gallons of water a day, and then I found out that it was actually being paid for by the taxpayers as they were refilling it with a little pass-through scheme, and then I come to find out that they starved those trees to death to save water, you know, ladies and gentlemen, now we're doing a couple million dollars, and money can't buy time. You can't replace mature trees. And we have all this talk about greenness and environmentally friendly stuff. You know what trees do to the climate? They temper it, they moderate the climate, they remove the pollution. They're a necessity. And our incompetent city government killed that park and ran it into the ground. And now they're taking your money to turn it into something that has a Krippe-Pringle flavor to it. And I'm opposed to the plan.
Mr. Silva.
Well, I think, having listened to the residents, who are part of the plan, I, I think we need to move forward with it. There will be some modern aspects to it, but I like the idea of refurbishing the park, giving it a, a facelift, and keeping some of the old charm to it. So I'm excited about what's going to happen to the park, and I think when it's said and done, we'll, we'll, we'll embrace it.
Ms. Rans.
Well, I hate to contradict Mr. Silva on this, because I know he sits on the Parks and Recs Commission, but I think a facelift on a dying body is useless. Really, you could use the money much more wisely to solve the problem long-term by using that money for an irrigation system, to keep the trees that are still remaining going, and to, when you replant, so that the other trees can continue to survive.
Mr. Sargent.
Well, you can see how good they're going to get along on city council. You know, I was inspired when Jennifer Fitzgerald just spoke. I felt really happy, and I used to swim in that duck pond when I was a little kid, okay? And I think her idea is a good idea. Yeah, there's always a bad side to everything, but you know, you guys, be a little positive. Let's just get the park back. Let's do whatever we got to do. And she did inspire me the way she said just now. That made me feel really good about the park, so I'm going to stay with her.
Mr. Mansouri.
I'm really glad to see this plan that's being focused on, you know, not just efficiency, but sustainability of our parks and that particular park. I also want to make sure that, you know, we, we are focused on public and green spaces. I'm really glad to see that. I agree with, you know, a lot of voices here. And I also just want to make sure that we're not just focusing on one park, but we're also focusing on all of our parks in Fullerton, increasing accessibility to all of our communities, and making sure that they're well-maintained, not just in one, but all of them.
All right, now, the, the last question, and we are able to have each one of our candidates have a question directed just to them. So Ms. Kapinski, this is for your, the first time to answer. Tell us, what are your two top priorities for the next four years if you are elected to the city council?
The two top priorities is to stop the high-density development and to repair our roads. Basically, that's the main reason why I decided to run, is to maintain the charm of Fullerton, to keep it the suburbs like we have, how we love it now, and to fix the roads. So if we have, whatever we have to do to make those two things happen, I'm willing to look at. And we need your help, because I need to listen to you guys. There's experts out there who know more than me about everything. So any ideas that you have about how we could find the money to fix the roads, I am ready to listen. So high-density, stop it, and fix the roads, my two main things.
Mr. Ferguson.
I suppose the two for me would be fiscal sanity. We'd have to step back and look at the public sector unions and how much they're sort of bleeding us dry and solve that. And then, once we've solved that problem, once we've sort of used triage to figure out what's going on financially with us, then utilize the money that we should be having to actually keep the promises to our citizens, whether it's roads, or parks, or schools, or what have you. We aren't maintaining these things because we aren't prioritizing where funding goes. So, I mean, it's infrastructure, utilization, and, like I said, fiscal sanity with where our money's all going.
Ms. Fitzgerald. If I'm re-elected, my top two priorities are going to be the two things that I think local government should fundamentally focus on, and that is strengthening public safety and our infrastructure, our roads, our water pipes, our sewers. It was said earlier by someone up here that we're only repairing and repaving one mile of road a year. No, that's what was happening before the current city council took over. Over the last four years, we've increased that funding so that we're repairing eight miles of, of road every year. And yet, it's still not enough. There's more to do. And so I will be acutely focused on resources to continue to repave and repair our roads, and making sure that we have the best public safety possible.
Mr. Bennett.
I agree. Fixing the roads. It's not sexy. Potholes aren't partisan. They just need to be fixed. We need to resurface our streets and get our city back to the level it was when I came here in 1980, which was a lovely city with good roads and, and just a very pleasant place. I agree with public safety, but I would just sort of put it all-encompassing. We need to protect our quality of life. So it doesn't mean we stop development, but we've got to be smart about the development we do. We need to do responsible development as we're looking at some of these spaces. And I think if we prioritize our spending on those core government functions, we can protect our quality of life, and we can have a great city to pass on to those kids. As I mentioned in my opening statement, that's my concern, that we pass on to the city, to our children and grandchildren, something that's vibrant and thriving.
Mr. Embriano.
Well, my first priority is to stop the insanity of the way the city's being run. I don't, you know, people say I'm negative. I'm a realist, ladies and gentlemen. I, I drive around, I see what I see. You can try to hide it from yourself, but that gets old really quick. I propose the moratorium on the development, and the, the issue can only be solved. We're in a situation where we're out of money, so the only way to get enough money to pay for the party that these people have created is to keep building us out of it with an $11,700 park rec fee that goes into the budget. So there's a tremendous incentive to go to 10 stories. I'm going to put the brakes on that, and I want to put the screws to the public unions, because the party's over. It is over, it has to be. And finally, ladies and gentlemen, finally, I'm not bought. And I'm not going to take any money from the developers. I'm not going to get a job with a humongous influence peddler. I'm not going to be connected to a newspaper, or congressman, or senator. I'm a father of four. I'm not for sale, and I can't be bought, and I'm going to deal with this. And web side of the dice end up, it doesn't matter, because I'm going to keep fighting.
Mr. Silva.
Yeah, I would agree that public safety should be right there at the top, and then, and again, with quality of life. And one of the things that I keep hearing out there is, yes, the infrastructure, and also the homelessness issue. I hear that a lot from, from people that I've talked to, you know, what are we, what are we doing about it? So those would be my, my things that I would focus on, the public safety and the quality of life as far as the infrastructure and the homeless issues that we have here.
Ms. Rans.
You're on the last two. I actually have a list of about 15 here. I'm going to pick my top two as being stopping overdevelopment and preserving Coyote Hills as 100% open space.
I don't know what to say. Everybody hates infrastructure, so everybody repeats that over and over and over again, but I've sat around for the last two weeks talking about where we're getting the money to speed up the infrastructure, and I think that's important, that we find the funds by bringing in new small businesses to create more tax base so we can increase our current schedule. Because our current schedule is not all that great because we don't have enough money to speed it up. I do agree with Jennifer Fitzgerald on what she spoke about, 110%, about public safety and roads, and also to make downtown a safe area for the families that have been, not the visitors that come in on the weekend, the 5,000 visitors come into the 30 bars, but the actual families that go down, have dinner and a glass of wine with their wife and their kids, and feel safe. So I think we need to increase the safety downtown so the residents feel more safer when they're downtown. As far as infrastructure goes, we just need to speed it up a little bit. We're doing really good. Eight miles is incredible. I think that's a good eight-mile, we had to do nine miles to keep up with the pipes. We're only a mile away from that.
Mr. Mansouri.
So my focus is offering a vision that's long-term, right? This is about going back to basics and making sure that we are good servants to the community. And so the two things that I'm prioritizing, one is to make sure that we are creating a long-term plan that is sustainable for our economy and for our infrastructure, and then two, because we got to think about, you know, what does our community look like and who are we for the next fifteen, twenty, thirty years? And then two, making sure that we're focusing on creating a Fullerton where it's so much healthier and promising for our future families here.
And Mr. Whitaker.
I'd like a council majority that's focused on the core services that city governments have to provide. The streets are in miserable condition. We all know that. The city's own internal performance audits have been showing down around 60% out of 100%. It's a D minus. I think that's a charitable grade. We deserve better than that. The city, majority of the city council, oh, the second issue is getting better mileage from our tax dollars. The majority of the city council just passed pretty lucrative raises for all the bargaining groups, averaging four to five percent per year increase for the next four years. A lot of money went to payroll, perks, and pensions that should have gone to pavement. So getting back to the basics is what this city needs to do and not trying to chase its tail by building the population of the city, chasing more revenue to try to deal with problems that we have adequate money for now in existing budgets. We just need a council willing to take that bull by the horns and do the right thing.
Thank you. We have, we have had a lot more questions handed in, but with time constraints, we are not going to be able to hear all of them. But you can go to the candidates' websites, and often they will have a contact way if you can ask questions. We're also asking the candidates to maybe, because we have to get out of the library. They want to close this place up. So I'm going to have the final statements, and then you can come up and talk to them as you're walking out and talk outside the door of the library if you have any more questions. So our final statements will start at the other end of the table. Ms. Kapinski, you will be first.
Again, thank you for this evening, and if elected to council, I will just be a reasonable voice, and I will be a listening ear to your concerns. I've been listening to the citizens already and taking to heart what they've been saying. And so that's, I would like a partnership with the community. And so that's what I am proposing, is a partnership. Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker.
I look forward to an additional term in terms of focusing on what's really important is representing the residents and the small businesses, the people in our city. Most city councils are dominated by people who are representing the wrong side of the equation. They represent outside special interests. They represent inside special interests. In my view, the role of a city council member is to represent those people. The whole purpose of city government existing is to provide the amenities that are necessary and desirable for all of us. So I think it's a simple concept, but if you look closely, you'll find people, even on our current city council, that will talk about they're defending the bureaucracy against the citizenry. They're trying to voice higher costs. They're withholding services and extorting us into having to pay and throw more and more money at something that we already paid for. Please, I would appreciate your support.
Mr. Mansouri.
So for one, thank you for, everyone here for joining us tonight and having to really listen to us for two hours. But, you know, I'm running because I love Fullerton, and I know that you guys do, too, and, you know, I care about the issues deeply that you guys care about as well. We've been running a really strong grassroots operation and campaign where we've had hundreds of donations, dozens of volunteers have joined us, really just to see our city just become a little bit better. You know, this week, we just crossed hitting 10,000 doors, and I see a few folks that we've talked to in person here, and I'm glad that you guys joined us. And, you know, we're doing this because we want to make sure that, you know, our neighbors are contributing to a plan that we have that's pretty comprehensive. It's 30 pages. We have it on our website. It's incorporating a lot of input that we've been getting at the doors. So I would love and encourage you guys to join our campaign and to make sure that our city is just a little bit better for our students and for our families and for our communities. And my contact information is on the website. My phone number's on there if you guys want to contact me directly. Thank you.
Mr. Sargent.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate it. I appreciate all the questions we got tonight. Some of them were tough because everybody answers a question the same way. My purpose for running 100% is, is I'm going to die here. This is it for me, okay? I'm not going anywhere. So if I want to die somewhere, I want it to be a good place, and I don't want everybody else to be ruling where we're going to end up in five to 10 years. I'd like to be a part of that. And it means a lot to me and my family and my four children and my five grandchildren that their grandpa dies happy. Okay? So I'm running for city council so I can make everybody happy, and like I said, I'm paying my own way.
Ms. Rans.
So over the years, I've been advocating for a change to business as usual in this city. I recognize that change is going to have to come from the inside. That means we need to elect a city council who listens and understands and acts upon the wishes of the many diverse communities in our city. If you don't want any, excuse me, if you don't want more of the same, such as high-density high-rises, ignoring 61% of the voters who said no to development in Coyote Hills, closing the children's library, and disenfranchising voters with that map that's part of the district ballot measure, then vote like the city council election as a referendum on new leadership. Vote for me, and please do check out my website at janerrans.com.
Mr. Silva.
Yes, well, yeah, thank you again for sitting through our discussion here. But yeah, I would say that I'm running because, again, as I listed before, I'm involved in the community. I'm doing things. I see an issue or a problem or an opportunity, and I go after it. I don't wait for someone to bring it to me. And as a city council member, I will go out and address the issues, go out and talk to you. I mean, I have talked to, I've been out there knocking on doors, I've been talking to a lot of people. And I love it when we stand there and share what their concerns are, then I can say, oh, I got to bring that over. So yeah, so again, we all love our city, but I'm one of the few here who, as a non-elected official, has been out there serving our community, putting things together, working with different groups to better our community. And I would also say that I would really push for a very transparent form of council. I know out on the streets where I've been walking, they keep saying, well, what's happening? Who's running who? Why do these developers get all the say? So I would say, if elected, I will make sure we're transparent, and I would push for a policy to make sure that we, as a council, are obligated to report any meetings or transactions with any developer.
Mr. Embriano.
Sixty seconds. Google me. Google Joe Embriano, I dare you. Because I want to tell you something, folks. I'm a pit bull off the chain when it comes to corruption, and I'm sick and tired of the status quo. I have four children. When I moved here years ago, I put the roots down deep, and I'm not going anywhere. And when I leave this place, whether it be in a pine box or on an airplane, it's going to be a better place because I lived here. That is my commitment to you. I have a clear plan. I've laid it out. I have a website called thefullertoninformer.com. I have another website called embrianoforfullerton.com. I am accessible, my cellphone number, my email, it's all on the city public record. I am not bought and paid for, ladies and gentlemen. I believe I am the real deal, okay? We've had decades of phonies, and you're not looking at one right here. And if you don't like my tone, that's okay. I hope you enjoy the sound your car makes tonight when you're driving home, because bouncing around on these roads is the byproduct of more of the same insanity. Ladies and gentlemen, we are out of time, we're out of money. Joan Brien for Fullerton City Council.
Mr. Bennett.
Well, I'd just like to thank you for having the patience of jobs to sit here and listen to us talk about what we think is good for the city. I'm more concerned about what you think is good for the city. That's why up on my website, I've put my home telephone number, and that's why I've put email addresses. I've been out knocking on doors, and I've been listening, and I think because of my background, my service to this community, I bring a perspective to the council that will be unique and I hope refreshing for you. And the only request I have of you tonight is, well, two requests. First off, if you'd stay seated at the end of our presentation, I'd like to take a picture because I'm going to put it up on Facebook that you all showed up to celebrate my birthday tonight. And secondly, I always say I'd like to be your first choice for city council, but if I can't be your first choice, by God, could I be your second or third? Larry Bennett for city council, www.bennettforfullerton.com. Thank you.
Ms. Fitzgerald.
Happy birthday, Larry. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this forum on, and I just want you to know I've always been a volunteer in this community, whether it's my kids' preschool or public school, the Fullerton Historic Theater Foundation, Coast to Coast Foundation, OC United, or the Chamber of Commerce. And I've been, I am very proud of my record of accomplishment in this new volunteer opportunity that I've had on city council. If I'm reelected, I'll continue to be a strong voice for Fullerton. My priorities will be public safety, roads, parks, sports fields, and a balanced budget. And when you vote on November 8th, I would be honored to have your vote. I would ask you to remember Jennifer Fitzgerald for Fullerton City Council, and my website is fitzgeraldforfullerton.com.
And Mr. Ferguson.
As everyone else said, thank you for coming. Thank you for the league for having us because it is an interesting forum to have questions posed at you and, you know, not know when you're going to have to answer them, so that's fun. I would hope that, like everyone else, I have a website, so it's joshuaferguson.com. Pretty easy. I'm narcissistic enough to know my name. I think what I'd like to say is that I'd like you to consider looking at me as a council member simply because I want to see sanity brought back to our council. I went to the last council meeting and I was sort of aghast when they said that they were using a grant to leverage a grant to pay for things. And if it's gotten that bad, we need to bring some real sanity back into council because, I mean, it's clever, I'll give them that. If it works, awesome. If it doesn't, well, we have problems. But we really do need to start looking at what our problems are, how we got here, and how we actually fix them. So joshuaferguson.com. Thank you again, and happy birthday, Larry.
And let's give a good round of applause to our candidates. We are very proud to have people that are giving up our time to run for public service and to do things for our community. Remember that October 24th is the last day that you can register or change your registration. Election Day is November 8th. You can register or change if you're moved on the Orange County Register of Voters website.